Well, yeah, so we are picking up, we left off last time with verse 10, and kind of had a pretty deep discussion around that. And now we're going to be moving in through 11 and onward, and 11 through 18. And you know, this is going to pose just as interesting. It's going to build on the previous lectures just because of just the overall approach, right? Thank you. And because what we've been looking at and talking about, like as we're introduced to these individuals or systems, dragon, Satan, sea beast, Antichrist, or Leviathan figure. And it's interesting because as the text is talking about the sea beast, is that we have, like, I mean, if we go back to Daniel, a beast represents a kingdom. But it's kind of retroactively, as we're talking about this in following verses, it also is kind of referring to the beast as an individual. Is that a beast within the context of the writing? Or within the reality that the symbolism is representing, is it representing an individual? But generally, what it is also approaching is a system. A beast is a system. It's an empire, it's a kingdom, right? And so it's a position of authority in the world, able to dictate or to have authority over the lives of Christians. It's the state. So once again, we're kind of talking, you know, in a full range of things here. But like, we know that it is government authority, but it can also potentially be an individual representing that authority. And that's kind of where the heads and horns all come in, right? And so it's important to keep all of that in view. Tonight, we're going to talk about the earth beast. Once again, seems to be talking about a false prophet, an individual, represented by Leviathan or Behemoth, right? So we have Leviathan and Behemoth, kind of the agents of chaos here. But within this false prophet, we are going to have another system represented that tags along with the first one. And that's exactly what we're going to see in the text, is that this false prophet is continually pointing back to the sea beast. So they build upon each other, and this is our unholy trinity, right? And all of this is a parody, a mockery of the trinity. So in an Antichrist figure, you actually have this as a parody of Christ, and then with the false prophet, one of a parody of the Holy Spirit. So, but it will get interesting as we work this out. And already, maybe you're talking about the mark of the beast, which comes up at the end of this chapter. And think about it, not necessarily in regards to individuals, but think about it in regards to systems. And that, therein lies the rub, right? So that will be challenging, especially, I mean, in any society, in any society over the last 2,000 years. But it's a challenge for any believer. So with that being said, let's go to the Lord in prayer, and we will dive in straight into the deep end. So please pray with me. Lord God, thank you once again for a time to come together to study your word. Father, we pray that this time will glorify you, that you would give us wisdom that is so far beyond ourselves, that is only imputed by your spirit. For the sake of your kingdom, for the sake of your glory, pray for understanding in these words, that in this time, that we would bear your seal properly and represent you well to a watching world, even a world that is seeking to persecute and even kill us. Give us wisdom to see these things around us, that the vision you gave was not just about a certain time, but for all time, leading up to the time of the end. As your servants, as your people, pray for your guidance, your direction in this time, now more than ever. Lord, we love you, and we thank you. And we pray all of these things in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, so as we do, let's read 11 through 18. And so we'll see exactly what we're getting into here. And then we will hear from the usual suspects, right? Kaiser, Keener, Schnabel, and Mounts. And fun names all around, right? That's right, Attorney Office, that is great, that's awesome. So, but yeah, hopefully by now, you've come to appreciate them as much as I have, just well-respected scholars with, you know, diverse opinions that I think contribute to an overall conversation. And because that is not something I wanted to do with the study, was just to be monolithic in our approach, and just kind of very dogmatic about how, you know, this will fit in in a certain way. You know, hopefully it gives you enough tools, at least principles, lenses to see the world around you in this generation and in the next, to see these things happening, and to maybe see it through the lens of the book of Revelation, and be challenged by that. So, all right, verse 11, let's kick off here. "Then I saw another beast coming up out of the earth, and he had two horns like a lamb, and he spoke as a dragon. He exercises all the authority of the first beast in his presence, and he makes the earth and those who dwell in it to worship the first beast, whose fatal wound was healed. He performs great signs, so that he even makes fire come down out of heaven to the earth in the presence of men. And he deceives those who dwell on the earth because of the signs which it was given him to perform in the presence of the beast, telling those who dwell on the earth to make an image to the beast who had the wound of the sword and has come to life. And it was given to him to give breath to the image of the beast, so that the image of the beast would even speak and cause as many as do not worship the image of the beast to be killed. And he causes all, the small and the great, and the rich and the poor, and the free men and the slaves, to be given a mark on their right hand or on their forehead; and he provides that no one will be able to buy or to sell except the one who has the mark, either the name of the beast or the number of his name." Here is wisdom. "Let him who has understanding calculate the number of the beast; for the number is that of a man, and his number is six hundred and sixty-six." All right, if you came here for answers, I'm just going to tell you, you're going to leave with more questions.
What's new?
What's new? That's right. So, all right, for the earth beast. So the earth beast, instead of being described as many heads, all we have is that there's two horns like a lamb, but talks or speaks like a dragon. Who's the dragon? Satan. So there's a connection of imagery within this section, and it's all very intentional. So this is a thing that we have to be careful about, right? Because as we were going over the last couple of weeks, as we include Daniel 7 into it, not all the imagery translates. In Daniel, it's super clean. There's a beast, the beast represents a kingdom, right? And then the heads almost represent different sections of that kingdom, right? So think of a two-headed beast, medium Persia, and then all of a sudden, you have horns. Oh, well, horns represent leaders, kings, just real clean, right? But here, it's not that case. Sometimes a head is referred to as a king, especially when we get to Revelation 17. So if a head's a king, and a crown's a king, well, what happens? I mean, by the time we get to Revelation 17, like, you're going to count 18 kings. If the heads represent kings and the horns represent kings, 18. Like, it's a lot. And so there's just not that, it's not as clean and neat. It's a little bit muddled. And I'm sure it's intended to be that way for John writing in that time. Because as we're going to get to, a lot of this is in code. We talked about that over the last couple of weeks. John is writing to people who know this imagery. He's writing to people who are reading this and who are completely deciphering it, not just in a theological sense, but also in a practical sense of their own government and state, of what we're going to see, their own imperial cults and worship, and how much that actually controlled of their daily life. So, so it's interesting here that the earth beast has two horns. And mind you, this is somebody that is kind of presenting themselves as a false prophet. That's how we see the earth beast as a false prophet. Why a false prophet? Well, because this individual is directing everybody to worship the first beast, the sea beast. So that's why we refer to them as a false prophet. Because if you're directing worship to anything or anyone other than God, you're a false prophet. So, but here's the irony, is that there's two horns like a lamb. And that's what the text is presenting. That is what John is communicating as God revealed to him. He's seeing these two little horns, little buds, like a lamb. Well, what's the imagery? What comes to mind when you hear lamb? Jesus, the Lamb of God. Oh, but then he turns that on his head, right? Because then you're thinking of Jesus, and he immediately points to Satan. And so that dramatic reversal, like, that's intentional. Remember, even as we had talked about in previous chapters, all the emotion that this is stirring up is completely a part of the experience of what we're reading and hearing. So just in the same way as I read it, and you heard it, you were like, oh, that's weird. Two horns like a lamb, oh, okay, all right. You know, and you're kind of like running that through, you know, the other beast, and you know, horns, and what you, you know, read from Daniel, like a lamb. Oh, lamb, right. And then all that imagery, but he talks like a dragon. So just that, that whole up and down, that's intentional. That is to show you the level of deception that this false prophet is going to bring to the table, bring to the world in that regard. Everybody will perceive, will see this person as a lamb, as one who is harmless, maybe even somebody who brings peace. But yet, their words are like that of the dragon, of Satan. And Satan is known as a deceiver, but also an accuser. So think of that as we are moving through here, how that ties in. So absolutely, because that's the thing. If we go back to verse 8, "All who dwell on the earth will worship him, everyone whose name has not been written from the foundation of the world in the book of life of the lamb who has been slain." Well, as we talked about last week, there is chance for people's names to be blotted out of that book. We read that within Scripture. It's not very comforting, I know, but like, that's the reality that we see, is that, I mean, with believers and non-believers, we have to take these warnings. So it's not something where like, I know my name's written in there, and I can just disregard all of this. Because all of a sudden, that arrogance could lead you. I mean, I know, I know, there's, we talked about this a long time ago, the whole once saved, always saved. And you know, even as we're reading here, written from the, you know, beginning, from the beginning, from the foundation of the world, right? Name has been written in there. But we also read about names getting blotted out. I mean, who's going to tell God, like, oh, I'm sorry, I worshiped the beast, I had no idea what I was doing? It's not going to fly. That's why we have this. Like, I know it was just an idol, it was just one time, or, you know, that year, that was a bad year. You know, like, that's not going to happen. I had to do it so that I could feed my family, so I could keep my job. So that, like, this is for everybody. This is for everybody that is under the authority of the sea beast, that empire. So, and as we'll talk, you know, I mean, actually, just kind of even, you know, prefacing this, like, so where my mind is as I'm studying this, like, within that context, is what about the barbarians? What about those who were beyond the extent of Rome at that time? Like, ooh, you know, it's like, all of a sudden, I don't know. It just, it's interesting to see, to think about these people who are outside of a system, way so far out of the imperial cult. And now by that time, they had not been evangelized, right? It's not so much, probably 100 years later, that we see forays into like Northern Europe, you know. Mike, I saw you thinking.
Yeah, I'm trying to think too.
Basel and a few others, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, even, I mean, yeah, a few hundred years. But it happens pretty quick. So, yeah, so, so, you know, it's just interesting. As we're talking about systems, the prevailing system of John's time is Rome. In the east, it's Parthia. So, and if for modern geographic purposes, you know, we're looking at the geography, the state of Italy, you know, for Rome, and then just wrap it around the Mediterranean. North Africa, all the way around. And then for Parthia, that's modern-day Iran. Eastern Iraq. North-West, a little bit more, you know, so it's cover some area. So, and they were kind of stretching along the Euphrates there, so. So what happens to Christians who didn't have, who weren't in John's context? Sure. Well, I think that's a whole nother question of like, like, are you talking about salvation?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, one, God is judge, and you know, salvation is through Jesus Christ, and so I'll let God sort that out. There's two points. I'm not judge, but I know Jesus is the way and truth and life. There you go, Roy? Oh, yeah, absolutely. And yeah, Jesus did warn his disciples against false teachers. We'll get that, Matthew 24, we'll get into some of that here in just a little bit. We read some last week about it. But yeah, false teachers, Antichrist. So we were diving into that, kind of following John's trail, because he definitely is beating that drum in 1 John, 2 John. He is confronting those who are probably, you know, have been in circles with Antichrist. Or even kind of, and we were talking about capital A Antichrist and little a, right? The ones that are just kind of leading people away from Jesus. But then also you have like Nero figures and Domitian, and you know, as they are persecuting the church and Antichrist to that fullest degree. So, yeah, absolutely. So, all right, there we go, warming up here, guys. So, any other questions? So the more we look at the false prophet, all right? So the origin, verse 11, is a beast that comes out of the earth. And we talked about the two horns, that's all verse 11. Verse 12, we see, "exercises all the authority of the first beast on its behalf, and it makes the earth and its inhabitants worship the first beast." So all the authority of the sea beast, the earth beast takes advantage of and flexes that. And we also see this beast performing great signs, which includes fire coming down from the heavens. Verse 14, "This false prophet deceives the inhabitants of the earth through the signs it performs on behalf of the beast. It also tells the inhabitants of the earth to make an image for the beast that had been killed but came back to life." So once again, just kind of flexing that authority, telling everybody to worship the beast, and then telling them to make an image of the first beast. And when I say first, I mean the sea beast. Then, in verse 15 of chapter 14, so we're just kind of unpacking this false prophet, okay? "We see the false prophet give breath to the image of the beast so that the image could speak. And then it causes all people who refuse to worship the image of the beast to be killed." Bless you. Verse, chapter 14, verse 16, "This false prophet also causes all people to be marked on the right hand or the forehead with the mark of the beast." Chapter 14, verse 16? Oh, is that a typo? I'm sorry, yeah, chapter 13. I was saying 14, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself here. Yeah, gee, 13. So 13:16, and then 13:17, "prevents all people who do not have the mark of the beast from buying or selling anything." So if you don't have the mark, you can't buy or sell. Chapter 16, verses 13 and 14, I'm going to read this just because it's super weird. "And I saw coming out of the mouth of the dragon, and out of the mouth of the beast, and out of the mouth of the false prophet, three unclean spirits like frogs; for they are spirits of demons, performing signs which go out to the kings of the whole world to gather them together for the war of the great day of God, the Almighty." So, "They spit out a foul spirit like a frog," a demonic spirit that deceives people. And then, chapter 19, verse 20, "And the beast was seized, and with him the false prophet, who performed the signs in his presence, by which he deceived those who had received the mark of the beast and those who worshipped his image. These two were thrown alive into the lake of fire, which burns with brimstone." So that's chapter 19, verse 20.
Okay, so that was the Antichrist, I mean, the sea beast or the earth beast?
Hmm?
Okay.
Yep, sea beast and earth beast were both thrown into... So... Oh, chapter 20, verse 10 is another reference, "And the devil who deceived them was thrown into the lake of fire and brimstone, where the beast and the false prophet are also..." Are also, like a present tense. "...and they will be tormented day and night forever and ever." There you go. Remember, John is writing this not to scare people, but to encourage them and to give them this idea of, like, the end from the beginning. That the current, the present state of suffering, persecution, of martyrdom, God is going to make everything right in the end. We come back to life in a resurrection. The enemies of God, they, their end is a lake of fire, of burning brimstone, forever and ever.
Unless you've been burned out.
So, so, okay, any questions on any of those? That's kind of all the verses that we have in Revelation of this false prophet. Lord willing, we will get to that tonight. No, no, there's going to be a buildup to it. And part of that is going to be understanding, you know, it's making sure that we understand the sea beast and the earth beast. I really did think about starting with the mark first, and then jumping back, but then I was just like, ah, that might be too confusing. Because it's a mark, not just a random mark, it's a mark of the beast. And so we have to understand who these beasts are for the mark to mean anything at all. So, and that's even going to provide more insight on the seal of God and another mark that we read about in Scripture. So, so the description of the false prophet. So the second beast here, that ascended from the earth, echoes the four kingdoms of Daniel 7:17. So, we have this beast, The second beast, like the beast parodies, Jesus, the lamb with seven, uh, I'm sorry, the second beast here. So as Jesus is described in Revelation 5:6 as having seven horns, this lamb, quote unquote, has two horns. Now, while the seven horns of Jesus, the messianic lamb, symbolize the fullness of his strength as the conquering Messiah, the two horns of the counterfeit lamb mimic the two witnesses, who are the two lampstands and the two olive trees. And the two horns of the evil ruler mentioned in Daniel 7:7 and Daniel 8:3. That's from Schnabel. I thought that was really fascinating, an interesting point there. Daniel 7:7 and Daniel 8:3. The authority that the first beast had received from the dragon is given by the first beast to the second beast. The authority of the false prophet is satanic and anti-Christian authority. The primary task of the second beast is to cause the inhabitants of the earth to worship the first beast. That is his job. The fact that the false prophet is successful in bringing the inhabitants of the earth to worship the beast and his image is described as deception. That's in verse 14. The repetition of the description of the false prophet as deceiver underlines that deception is the main work of this evil reality. This deception is achieved by great signs that the false prophet performs. By deception, directs everybody to worship this first beast. So John's readers would have connected the description of the beast from the sea with the false prophets and false messias. And so Jesus had prophesied that false messias and false prophets will appear and produce great signs and omens to lead astray, if possible, even the elect, Matthew 24:24. Jesus warned about false prophets who are ravenous wolves in sheep's clothing, Matthew 7:15. John had spoken of anti-Christ who perpetuate false teaching. In first John 2:18, we read some of that last week. That was chapter, first John, chapter 2, verse 18 and 22. And first John, chapter 4, verse 3. And second John, verse 7. And he had warned churches about false prophets. Namely, from Revelation, chapter 2, verses 2. Chapter 2, verse 14 and 15. And chapter 2, verse 20 through 24. Okay, so here is from Schnabel. Listen to this. John's readers would have linked the beast from the sea with the Roman imperial system. In particular, they would have connected the sea beast with the imperial priests who were active in the emperor cult, ensuring the integrity and the expansion of the worship of the deceased emperors. If John wrote the book of Revelation around AD 95, his readers would have been confronted with the claims of Domitian, who was called, who called himself Dominus et Deus, Lord and God. The false teachers of the church, the Nicolaitans of Revelation 2, whose activity is compared with that of Jezebel and Balaam, taught and encouraged compromise with the institutions of the Roman empire, particularly those requiring participation in the emperor cult. Do you guys remember that when we were talking in Revelation 2? Just some of the connections to the empire, emperor cult, empire, imperial system? These prophets pose as spokesmen for truth, but instead they promulgate lies. They bring down fire from heaven, Revelation 13:13, which could be a description that implies claims to divine authorization. So as the emperors were declaring themselves gods. And with that could bring down the full wrath of Rome on anybody they want. Nobody was out of their reach. The true Christian prophets are portrayed in Revelation 11:5 as speaking as fire pours from their mouth and consumes their foes. The fire in 11:5 is clearly symbolic. John does not speak of literal fire breathers. The missionaries and teachers of the church speak God's true word that convicts and judges sinners. So once again, Schnabel taking, you know, a symbolic approach to this. And so that fire is speaking more of judgment. This is a rebuking of the world for their sin and rejection rebellion against God. Actually, I think that's still in some of our terminology for some hard preaching, right? Oh, what's the phrase? Thinking of like, fire and brimstone preach, yeah. It was totally gone. But yeah, fire and brimstone preaching, right? So. In contrast, the false prophets appear to speak the truth, but in reality promote the values and falsehoods of the devil. They advocate continued integration and participation in the institutions of pagan society, arguing that compromise with pagan religious practices is harmless and without consequences for the salvation of believers in Jesus. Just, just let that one ruminate for a second. I tell you what, if I were to ever write a devotional, it would be stuff like that that I would have on a page. It'd just be like, oh, you know, it's like one of those where you're like, do I want to read this today? Oh, I got kicked in the teeth, all right. So. I mean, that's. Yeah, 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 go for it. And, and that's the whole idea of the Nicolaitans and Jezebel. Uh, just, let's just include them. It's harmless.
It's what we're doing already, so.
Let's quote Romans 13. It's what the state requires. And God put them in charge. Boom. That's some grade A false prophet stuff there.
It's the opposite of everything that they're doing.
Yeah, right. Absolutely. And, and so, so. And already you can kind of see how all encompassing in the ancient world, this paganism would have been, would have been, right? Okay, rewind to the 1950s. And you're the only Satanist that you know of. Right? And all of a sudden, you know, everybody's looking at you funny when you don't want to go to church on Sunday. Or, you know, you're asking the boss to work on Sunday, right? All the blue laws and everything. I mean, just kind of turn it on its head. That's the only thing, you know, point of reference that we have because we grew up in a Judeo-Christian society. Absolutely. So, maybe I shouldn't have said Satanist, maybe a Hindu. 1950s, there you go. So, you know, but like it's still, it's just one of those things that, I mean, it's just hard for us to even imagine. And even now, as our society becomes much more pluralistic, I mean, like, that's the thing is we're already starting to stick out. Just a little bit, just a little bit. And it seems like a lot because of where we've come from. But in the next 20 years, what that's, what is that going to look like? So, and that's, but remember, other believers have lived through this and endured it and have continued to be disciples and make disciples through it without compromising. And that's the thing that we have to remember and be completely encouraged about, but we have to be intentional. So, like, this kind of gives us a leg up. Because even for us to be a society in transition, we can read this and just be like, as some of these things are happening, we can, at some level, have that Holy Spirit discernment on how close those ties need to be or how loose they should be. And especially while we have a voice within government. So. Yeah, absolutely. So. Once again, Schnabel, the command of the second beast to perform idolatry alludes to the pressure on the people living in the province of Asia to give homage to the image of the emperor in the imperial temples. And there's all kinds of evidence for this historically. John portrays the veneration of the emperor as satanic deception, diverting the worship that is due only to the true and living God, to human beings who are not divine, good, or eternal. John emphasizes that when the willingness to worship the emperor becomes a matter of life and death, like Revelation 13:15, Christians have to be faithful and refuse to worship the image of a human being, even if it means certain death. And so we had talked about Hen and I, Ezra and Michael, Daniel's friends, who were thrown into a furnace, right? And so much like that, to be able to stand up and stand against the prevailing authorities when they tell us to compromise the worship of God. So the false prophet not only fosters false worship, he also enforces economic sanctions against those who refuse to participate. The whole buying and selling, right? While the role of the false prophet is described as primarily religious, his enforcement of political and economic loyalty makes him an agent of the secular state. An agent of the secular state. So that's that weird thing that we're, you know, we've talked so much, you know, over the separation of church and state. But that was completely foreign to ancient Rome. Emperor cults, like the imperial system, that was all together. So. I mean, to the point where, you know, cities were using your tax dollars to build, to, to, to bid, to build the next temple for the emperor who was maybe still alive or who had just passed. So there was a bidding war for it. So. Yeah, it's pretty interesting. Now. Also, Schnabel also includes, if we do not see it already, we need to realize that secularism and consumerism demand just as much worship in terms of loyalty and obedience to the rules and values of the game as the Roman emperors demanded in the first century. That's a free one. So. Once again, some pretty interesting stuff there. Schnabel's take on the false prophet. So if we were to see it through the lens of Rome, okay? So if we were to talk about, so Rome, then sea beast is the, you could say the imperial system plus emperor. So heads and crowns and, or horns, right? And then, we have earth beast with mood music. And so, the earth beast being a false prophet, it too is a part of the imperial system. But it's the religious part of it. The emperor cult, if you will. Because remember, they are directing worship back to the sea beast. And really, Rome embodies everything that was the world. If you think of Jesus's teachings, if you think of the prophets, like, you know, for the systems of their time, what Jesus was pointing to in warning his disciples. If you think about the epistles, I mean, really, I mean, you know, there's so many times like, you're like, oh, here's a lens. Go back and reread the whole Bible, right? And so this is one of those, is go back and read all the epistles as the apostles writing to churches, people that they know and love, who, you know, that original, like, first crop of disciples. And maybe they hung out there for a year and made more disciples, right? And so enough to have a fellowship. And then they're writing a letter and, I mean, if you think about each of the epistles, what are they saying? Basically, in a nutshell, quit acting like the world. Quit acting like Rome. I don't care if Rome says it's okay, or this is what a good Roman citizen does. That's not what a child of God does. Like, that's the framework, right? And so if you want to talk about the dragon, the dragon Satan embodies the world. And so he's just getting organized. And that's what we call empires, right? So, so it's just, it's one of those things. But that's us thinking counterculturally. Okay? Because when we talk about Jesus, see, and this is where, when we talk about one side of the coin, it only highlights the other side. So when we talk about Jesus and we talk about him being Lord, we're talking about him being king. Like, that is how awesome this is, that God has his own system, where Satan, the dragon, has his system. It's God's kingdom that we are looking forward to. And God already has his leadership established in that through Jesus Christ. And it's the Holy Spirit that is continually directing us and our worship to the Father and the Son. So, the question should be for us is what does the system of God look like? What does the kingdom of God look like? And so I think a glimpse of that is Jesus's teaching also getting into like in practical circumstances, reading through the epistles. That's the lens, right? That's what we've always talked about, is understanding scripture in its context so we can translate it into ours. So here's that lens, is we're reading the epistles. Paul is telling the Corinthian church a whole laundry list of things to quit doing, right? But he's also teaching them some things and, you know, all this other stuff. And it's like, oh, well, all those things that he's telling them to quit being like regular Romans, well, what would that translate for us today? And, I would be remiss if I didn't include this, but I personally believe, the way I read the Bible, is that the beginning of the Bible, the first five books, God established some rules for his kingdom. That's how I read it, that's how this all fits in for me theologically. And that's going to come into play here in a second, too. Teaser. Heiser really didn't have much to contribute in the way of this discussion. There'll be quite a bit more when we get into the mark of the beast. But here, yeah, really not too much for verses 10 through 15. So I'm going to put Heiser aside there. Keener, not much as well. He has some thoughts, but nothing that diverges too much from what Schnabel said. So, he takes a little bit more of a literal understanding of this, where John apparently envisions a future blending of anti-Christian state religion and occult power, both of which existed most separately in his own day. His source for this view is undoubtedly Jesus, Matthew 24:24. And he has Old Testament precedent for the occult powers in the service of an anti-God ruler repressing God's people. So thinking of Pharaoh and different things like that. So like I said, Keener taking a little bit more of a literal perspective, kind of moving away from a system. So, I mean, hopefully you guys are picking this up. Has everybody kind of got this written down and? Good? All right. So, so basically, we're talking about a spectrum here. Individual supernatural on one end of that spectrum, systems on the other. So, right now, like, so Schnabel was definitely over here. Keener is leaning more towards this side. So, mind you, it could all be right. Hopefully that's what you've been hearing, is that over the last 2,000 years, you know, that there were systems in place, but then, oh, there were, you know, you go high enough, there's an individual in charge there. Or there's an individual that's directing that authority. I was going to make a joke, but I won't. Sad enough tonight. So, all right. So now we're going to go to Mount here, and really just kind of comb through these first few verses, just to get through here, because once again, Mount is actually bringing up some of the Leviathan and Behemoth language as well. So, ancient tradition spoke of the two primeval monsters, which inhabited the ocean depths and the dry land. According to 1 Enoch, chapter 60, Leviathan, a female monster, lived in the abyss of the ocean, and Behemoth, the male, occupied a waste wilderness named Duodain. Since such mythology was already known to the authors of the Old Testament, there is no particular reason why John may not have reflected on it. To borrow images known to common culture is not the same as saying that they are authentic and real. Oh. Yeah. Some writers think that since the first beast may have been suggested by Daniel 7:3, the four great beasts came up from the sea, the second beast could well have been suggested by the interpretation of this passage a few verses later. Daniel 7:17 says that the beasts are kings that arise out of the earth. A simpler solution is that as the first beast came from across the sea, or out of the sea, the second beast rose within Asia Minor itself. So remember, that's where John and those churches are, the seven churches of Revelation. In any case, the evil triumvirate is now complete, as Christ received authority from the Father, so Antichrist receives authority from the dragon, and as the Holy Spirit glorifies Christ, so the false prophet glorifies the Antichrist. So the beast out of the earth is a deceiver. So we talked through all of that, we talked about, let's see. Yeah? I think we are ready to move into verse 15 here. So the image of the beast. So the second beast is given the power to animate the image of the first beast. He gives it the breath of life, and the image speaks. Belief in statues that spoke and performed miracles is widely attested in ancient literature. Yes, you heard me right. So, in ancient literature, like, they tell stories of statues speaking. Simon Magus is reputed to have brought statues to life. Andreas, the sixth-century commentator, reminds us that it was the age of Apollianus of Tyana, whose trickery was held to come from the powers of evil. Ventriloquism was practiced by the priests of the oriental cults, and sorcery had found a place in the official circles of Rome. A pallas of Ascalon was at home in the court of Caligula, and Apollianus was a friend of several Roman emperors. The sorcerer and false prophet Elimus, on the island of Cyprus, sought perhaps by devious methods to prevent Sergius Pulis, the proconsul, from accepting the faith as preached by Paul and Barnabas, Acts, chapter 13, verses 6 through 8. Acts 13, verses 6 through 8. So the syntax of the verse suggests that the image not only spoke, but also passed the death sentence upon all who would not worship it. So before, maybe if you were reading that as the false prophet was saying it, the language there points to the actual image pronouncing the death penalty. There may be a change of subject in the final clause, so that it is the second beast who enforces worship of the image. In either case, the result is the same. In the last days, there is to be a great division in the human race. Some will remain true to the faith, even in the face of death, others will turn to worship to the Antichrist. So the second beast requires all people to receive the mark of the first beast on their right hand or forehead. So the coupling of opposites, this is for verse 16. Small, great, rich, poor, free slave is a rhetorical way of stressing the totality of human society. No one who would carry on the normal pursuits of everyday life is exempt. The origin of the mark is variously explained. It could derive from the practice of branding disobedient slaves or soldiers defeated in battle. Religious tattooing was widespread in the ancient world, and devotees of a particular god were often branded to indicate their loyal devotion. Petolami Philopeta branded Jews who submitted to registration with the ivy leaf, the mark of Dionysiac worship. And that's in 3 Maccabees, chapter 2, verse 29. The word "translated mark" was also used for the likeness or name of the emperor on Roman coins.
Told me, what was that for? Did he say what it was for?
Those who submitted to registration.
Not they could buy.
Yep, yep, that's right. "The word 'translated mark' was also used for the likeness or name of the emperor on Roman coins." I know I read that before, just wanted to read that again. "This may be the reason why, in the present verse, the mark is placed on the hand as well as on the forehead. The word was also a technical designation for the seals that were attached to commercial documents and stamped with the name and date of the emperor." Okay, so I want to pause right there with that, and I want to go over here. Yes, go ahead. Sure. Yeah, so, so that's what we were talking about, with the beast and false prophet, we're talking about systems. Oh, so the question is, as we're talking, starting to talk about the mark of the beast, are we talking about something real and literal or something symbolic? And to her question is, you know, also with the beast and the earth beast, the sea beast. And what we're talking about here are systems, as well as individuals, and even getting into like some of the more supernatural understanding of the text, right, of what is said in the text. So it can be one, or the other, or both. And we see this.
Could you write the commentators' names?
Oh, yeah.
Because also, I don't know how to spell them.
Sure, sure, sure. So, okay, let's see. Mount is kind of coming in over here. Boy, this would be. So, Mount. Schnabel. I think Keener is actually coming in over here as well.
About where Mount is?
I think so. I think so. And Heiser is coming in over here. I think he just leans that way. That's a good question. You know what, like, that's a, that's a fair question. And, and really, there's a reason I'm teaching it this way. Really, I think you guys have all been with me long enough, like, my theology is probably best described as one of points of tension instead of single, like, nuggets. Yeah. And so, so much in the same way of, hey Luke, is it systems or is it individual? Yes. Because, you know, I'm just thinking of Scripture, I'm thinking of history, and I see it. I see it all. I mean, wait, don't take that as arrogantly as it sounded. But, like, I just see, I see systems and I see individuals in the text, and, and from what I know of history. And so you couldn't nail me down to one of these. And so there's a tension here, and the question is, like, like, taking the Anabaptist movement with Catholicism, right, in the 1500s, well, what does that look like today? What does something so completely in control, what does that look like today? I will probably start with systems and work my way, see how far down I can go. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, and you could write, you know, you could draw that, it's an upside-down triangle, too. So, or even a regular triangle of like, if you go up high enough, like, you know, somebody's there, and the dragon's going to be right above. So, yeah, um, yeah, so, so, and that's, I think that describes my theology. There you go, it was one of tension. So, and it's not like in anything, like, yeah, I mean, hopefully, you guys know me enough. I am not one you would consider liberal. So, by any stretch of the imagination, although, like, I understand, like, I mean, just from a contextual perspective, there might be parts of Scripture that might be perceived as like, oh, whoa, you hold that intention? Yeah, because maybe that's what they believed about it back then. And just because that's where opinion went in the last hundred years, or whatever else. I mean, really, like, even what I'm talking about here might be seen as a liberal perspective on Revelation. Because I'm not saying that so-and-so, right, like, you know, I'm not naming names of how this is getting fulfilled today. So, I mean, we could just rewind to the 90s and imagine somebody saying this. So. Yeah, and that's what I was saying. So are these individuals real? And the answer is yes. Right? But it's bigger than just a person. These are people, like, trying to think of an example here. If there is a movement that is kicked off by a person, or that maybe a person moves up through the ranks and takes what was a small movement into like mainstream, how can you separate those things? One just so embodies that whole movement, and you can't separate them from that. Right? And so that's, that's the essence of, and really, of what we're reading from the sea beast, or I'm sorry, from the earth beast, is that this person has come up in this system, and whether there is a leader of that system who suffered a wound and came back. And so all of a sudden, this person stands up and says, guys, this is a miracle, we need to worship that person. Right? That could happen. That could absolutely happen. But what we've also talked about is that this is a system. The system of imperial Rome. And to cement that was a religious context that had developed within it, not just of the Greek and Roman gods, but also of worshiping the emperors themselves. So that kind of takes that to the next level. And so, you know, you had leaders of those cults who were directing people to worship those emperors. Even one, like Domitian, that we had talked about before, who the rumor was that he had died and had come back to life. What a coincidence, as that was around the time John was writing. And that's what I'm saying, is that like, once you try to nail it down to one side or the other, there's evidence that it's, it's bigger than that. Lives on, right. Yeah, no, no, I don't think I brought that up. Yeah, no, that's, that would be interesting, because it does, because then that would be kind of a blending of persons with that, that's kind of fascinating in itself. But, yeah, okay, I'm going to have to think about that one. No, no, but, but what happens, you know, with this is that they're setting up images, statues, temples around the empire, and making the people worship them, or burn incense to them. So, that is, that is a thing. So, all right, well, good, okay. 10 minutes, the mark of the beast. So, here we go. So, leading off on 15 here. So, so everybody kind of, I mean, understand, we're talking about Revelation here. So as much as the material that's been presented, as much as I've been talking up here, everybody is able to like connect some dots here to like what maybe 14 and 15 mean. "And he deceives those who dwell on the earth because of the signs which it was given him to perform in the presence of the beast, telling those who dwell on the earth to make an image to the beast who had the wound of the sword and has come to life. And it was given to him to give breath to the image of the beast, so that the image of the beast would even speak, and cause as many as do not worship the image of the beast to be killed." would even speak and causes many as do not worship the image of the beast to be killed. So, in the Greek, that's artificial intelligence. Just kidding, just kidding. That was for you, Mr. Dunville. And he causes all the small and the great and the rich and the poor and the free men and the slaves to be given a mark on their right hand or on their forehead. So, let's pause right there in the reading, right up to 17 here. And it is here that I want to bring Hyzer in. And Schnabel has some interesting thoughts on this as well. So, what Hyzer says is that, so 666 is described as the number of a man and the name of the beast. So number and name. The key to understanding the rationale of the number is that the number is borne by people. This hearkens back in a sinister way to the Old Testament concept of bearing the name. Bearing the name. Has anybody read Carmen Imes, Bearing God's Name? Oh, it's really good. It's really good. I highly encourage that. And honestly, it'll give a lot of context to this discussion. Bearing God's Name. So Israelites bore the name in Numbers, chapter 6, verse 23. Yahweh spoke to Moses, saying, speak to Aaron and the sons, saying, thus you shall bless the people of Israel. He shall say to them, Yahweh bless you and keep you. Yahweh make his face shine, to shine upon you and be gracious to you. Yahweh lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace. So shall they put my name upon the people of Israel and I will bless them. Israelites were not, of course, branded. The idea here is metaphorical to bear the name meant to represent Yahweh. To be the holy nation and kingdom of priests. Exodus, chapter 19, verse 6. Other Old Testament passages literalize the idea, at least in terms of the Torah. In the Old Testament, uh, in the Old Testament, God told Israel that the Torah was to be as a sign on your hand and as a reminder on your forehead in order to remind them continually of their commitment and loyalty to God. So, let's go to Exodus, chapter 13. So once again, this is taking the parody of the unholy trinity to that next level. Right? So if we're talking about a mark on the right hand on the forehead, well, where else do we see that in scripture? Let's go to Exodus 19. Or I'm sorry, Exodus 13. And it shall serve as a sign to you on your hand and as a reminder on your forehead that the law of Yahweh may be in your mouth, for with a powerful hand Yahweh brought you out of Egypt. So it's interesting that what this is referring to, if we jump back to the first part of, I mean, really this whole section, you have the ordinance of the Passover. And here in chapter 13 of Exodus, it's the consecration of the firstborn. And then 13, verse 6, for seven days you shall eat unleavened bread and on the seventh day there shall be a feast to Yahweh. Unleavened bread shall be eaten throughout the seven days and nothing leavened shall be seen among you. Nor shall any leaven be seen among you in all your borders. You shall tell your son on that day, saying, it is because of what Yahweh did for me when I came out of Egypt. Ah, and then here's verse nine. And it shall serve as a sign to you on your hand and as a reminder on your forehead that the law of Yahweh may be in your mouth, for with a powerful hand Yahweh brought you out of Egypt. Therefore you shall keep this ordinance as its appointed time from year to year. So all of a sudden, there's a little bit of insight into, hey, wait a second. We're not talking about marking up our hands or our foreheads. It's what we do, it's what we think. It's the things that, it's how we obey Yahweh. It's not just in our minds. We're not just thinking about it, thinking happy abstract thoughts. We're not just reading God's word and like trying to memorize it, we're doing it. That's the hand, that's the head, that's the hand. That is what this is about. So as we are talking about this mark of the beast. Right? We're talking about the literal and something symbolic. We're talking about something that is with the hands and the head that, oh, this is the system that I am living and perpetuating. Here, as an example, and there's gonna be other examples, this is keeping the feast of unleavened bread. So it's not as literal as, you know, Yahweh saying, hey, write this on your hand and write this on your forehead. You know, it's, oh, that's a reminder to me and not just when I look in the mirror, but it's everybody else looking at me, Luke, you have something on your forehead. Cause that would be tricky if I just maybe wrote a new command each day and, you know, so for everybody to share. Oh, what does it say? Do not commit adultery. Okay, all right, good one. That would be weird. So it's, it's an idea here that this is what, what is being perpetuated. So Deuteronomy, chapter 6. You knew it was coming. I'm gonna start at verse 1 as a buildup here to verse 8. Now this is the commandment, the statutes and the judgments which Yahweh, your God, has commanded me to teach you that you might do them in the land where you are going over to possess it. This is Moses speaking. Deuteronomy is kind of his swan song. Out of Egypt, through the wilderness, 40 years later, at the base of Mount Nebo, where Moses is gonna go up and die, he's giving Deuteronomy. Here's your laws for going into the land. So that you and your son and your grandson might fear Yahweh, your God, to keep all of his statutes and his commandments, which I command you all the days of your life and that your days may be prolonged. O Israel, you should listen and be careful to do it, that it may be well with you and that you may multiply greatly, just as Yahweh, the God of your fathers, has promised to you in a land flowing with milk and honey. Here, Shema, O Israel, Yahweh is our God. Yahweh is one. You shall love Yahweh, your God, with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your might. These words which I am commanding you today shall be on your heart. You shall teach them diligently to your sons and shall talk of them when you sit in your house and when you walk by the way and when you lie down and when you rise up. You shall bind them as a sign on your hand and they shall be as frontals on your forehead. You shall write them on the doorposts of your house and on your gates. Verse 8, you shall bind them as a sign on your hand and shall, and they shall be as frontals on your forehead. So Jews have taken this literally and that is phylacteries. So the leather binding. Now generally Jews will actually bind their left arm. I don't think there's too many that actually bind their right arm, but here, as you can see, on your forehead, as frontals on your forehead and on your hand. So. So there you go. That is kind of making its own case as what we're talking about with the mark of the beast, as once again being a parody of what God had commanded. Yeah, I'm sorry. And then reinforcing the whole idea of a system. Because as the context for this being presented, it's God's system. He had brought a people, a slave people out of Egypt, a people who really didn't have an identity and gave them his commands, his laws, his statutes, his ordinances, his holidays, everything, his dietary requirements, even how they should dress, how they should plant their fields. I mean, it's a whole system. And when you understand it as such, it kind of makes a little bit more sense. Because it was completely contrary to the ways of Egypt. It was completely contrary to the ways of the tribes of the promised land that they were coming into. It was supposed to be so that they wouldn't compromise and synthesize these as a way of life. And with that. This is just an understanding that, I, I mean, so when I read Revelation, like, all right, you guys know me. I love Deuteronomy, I love the first five books. And so when I read like the mark of the beast and like right hand and forehead, I'm just like, I, I think of Deuteronomy 6:8. And that's, and it's just this continual, like Antichrist. And I really think like, and this is, this is my own personal perspective, not that of CCC. But I really think like the Torah is a missing element of our theology in the 21st century. And I think it, by leaving it out, by preaching a end of the law type idea, it opens us up to the deception of an Antichrist system. Because, think about it. That's right. That's right, there's no anchor point, there's no foundation. Jesus lived by the law, the Torah perfectly. So that we could disobey it? So that we could just throw it out baby with the bathwater? I just don't think so. And I think like, there's just so much wisdom in it. And remember, Moses didn't come up with it, it's from God, himself, to his people, creating his own system, knowing that the world was gonna provide many systems of its own. So I just think it comes back to that. The church does selectively for commentary on morality or a host of other issues, but just not wholesale. And so I, I just think it's one of those missing pieces and I think it provides a lot of insight. And I don't think it would ever push us from Jesus. In my own personal theology to follow him is to live as he did. So, once again, Luke Herbst theology and how that connects, not that of CCC. So majors, minors, right? But I think it proves insightful as far as the mark of the beast goes. We will talk more about this next week. All right? Thank you guys for being a part of this. God bless you for putting up with me.